Thank you to our planning board meeting this Sunday, July 15. First item on our agenda is the roll call. This evening we have Lisa Buck, we have John Becker, we have Jeff McIsaac, myself, Phil Ruck, we have Mr. Schutze, David Thompson, and Michael Costello on the end. Michael, we are going to adjourn you with the voting. Next up is acceptance of the agenda. Second, any discussion, addition, subtraction here or there, although in favor of the agenda? Moving on, approval of the minutes of May 20th, 2015, as usual with the stellar job of preparing summary of what we talked about last time. Any, actually I'll take motion. We accept it next to me, I think. Motion second. Second, any edits, discussion? Great job, very good. Very good. Further discussion, how long may they? Moving on, we have one public hearing this evening. It is a file clustered major subdivision, major site plan, which was requested by Orion Duane Edge LLC for proposing a six unit unit, state housing facility in 111 Park Street, tax map 20 dash 1, lot 42 in the C2 zone. If I could have Daphk step up to the mic and explain where we're at.
My name is Bob Clark, Maryland Major Associate. We submitted the final. We reviewed it preliminary subdivision. We received all the comments, addressed everything that's been requested of us at this time. We were the email to Evan at the state has drafting up the permit, our state permit at this point, with the dollars for the questions. Right, close, you know, starts close the public hearing.
Very good. Any questions from board? Before I do open up the public hearing, Evan provided summary of the application, the final application, so before I do open it up, our public comment, Evan, can you provide us a summary of what is going on?
Yeah, yeah, you know, these projects sometimes, you know, there's a certain way that the developer, the public, so for the area, the staff, so I just want to make sure that you detail the bill, you recall the details of this project, if you have a drawing there, and if you have any questions at all about the performance of the project, consider it a good concern, report, please, three day ask, Mr. Clark, or New York, anything else on board numbers. But I will address the items that were imposed with conditions by you at preliminary stage. A lot of this stuff had a lot to do with revision of the plan, which are essentially, as you proved, a lot to do with legal agreements, litigation, and securing litter control, those sort of operating things. So let me go through them, but you will recall that this is a 61 unit development that is clustered, multi family, designed, delivered for the different, the the American, the reparent, who met all the threshold standards for clusters of the open space, real space, community space. Both of the block requirements did correct the one place where they needed to correct that, and so forth. It will contain up to 264 bedrooms, 61 unit, Philly, it's strictly townhouses and two apartment structures. So let's go through the conditions of approval and where they all stand. First, would you step to the open space related conditions of approval that a lot of the clusters, the all the conditions of the ordinance. As you see on the plan, there is open space, maybe body condition, point to the degree of space, the large section right there, importantly, that contains a vertical ladder for rock site, the two, or pool of rock site, either way, there's a bit, yet they are vertical pool. And importantly, also for the ordinance in particular, there's other open space that is part of the avenue type, so now we've got a block of open space for there, which is one of the purposes of cluster. Then there's all the period of space, you can point to that, which is modified space floor, storm architecture, more recreation purposes, and so forth, includes kind of town square kind of thing, I guess you could call it, where the building is in the, it looks like. So they need those thresholds, but there does have to be some legal memorialization of all this stuff.
In the form of an open space agreement and declaration of covenants and conditions and restrictions, and that latter document is filed registry so that anybody buying this property in the future will know that this is restricted open space. It sets forth the limits on use and any kind of modification of that open space or, and prevents any future development of it. And the open space agreement is agreement between the developer and the town spun out that they will be maintaining that and monitoring it and so forth. So those have been submitted. Mr. Russell, Tom Russell, town attorney, reviewed, gave some comments. They've incorporated most of the comments. I've included on page two of my comments to you, a couple of things, small things that need to be added or modified. These are things that would be done, easily done, you know, during the execution of the plan, and, but as you'll see later, will become a condition of, my recommendation become condition of your final approval, if that's what you choose to do. Those are just technical items. Related to the dimensional standards of the project, the developer has provided calculations of building height. They can go to 45 feet with your approval, and the data are submitted and contained, and code enforcement officers reviewed it and agrees that it's within the standards, that some of the buildings are right at 45 as calculated by per ordinance, and some are less than 45. They had two decks, a couple of decks infringing on the buffer area. Bob, would you just point out where those decks had been located down at ES? And those are now removed, so they've complied with that condition. The buffer area has to be 25 feet for this kind of development. It can't be, it's got to be vegetated. The big heavyweight conditions related to traffic, and this included installing rumble strips at the Orchard Trails end of proposed Orion Way. This was, this, Orion Way will be one way in from Orchard Trails Drive. And, you know, how that's going to get enforced, who knows? But there needs to be at least some discouragement, so there'll be signage, but it's fairly wide, right, you know, paved way, 30 feet, so they narrowed the paved way down to 22 feet, 10 feet of which will be incorporated into rumble strips, so it'll only be about 12-foot smooth passage, which is, you know, a real signal that this is just one way. But buses and emergency equipment can still make the turn and get over the rumble strips in there.
Bob, could you elaborate on the signage piece while Evan mentioned that? Just let us know what signage is proposed.
Yes, we have do not enter signs on both sides of the road. We also have one-way signs coming at the teed intersection.
Here, then here's the, these are do not enters, and this is the one-ways in that location, so.
The rumble strips really squeezed the traffic down to a 12-foot wide lane so that emergency vehicles, as Evan mentioned, will be able to mount and ride over the concrete, and it'll deter a student turning and going out onto Orchard Trail because they wanted to not circulate through the development, so. Importantly, there's also a lot of the shuttle bus to make its turn in there as it comes out of Orchard Trails apartments. There needed to be a reciprocal agreement between the owners of Orchard Trails Apartments and the Edge, because both projects need access to each other's private roads. And that reciprocal agreement was submitted as part of preliminary plan. Mr. Russell made comments. They've incorporated all the comments that Tom provided. There, Tom Russell recommended that there be also an access season for the town to assure that, especially the bus, but also emergency vehicles, would have the rights of access to private Orion Drive and Orion Way, and the present draft incorporates all of Tom's One of the key pieces of this development, one of the key impacts of the development potentially, is the impact of these additional 244 beds, or the residents who are occupying them and driving cars out of them, on the intersection of Washburn Place and Park Street. Could you just point to that, Bob, for reference? Or, yeah, that's Washburn, it come down to, yeah, and the avenue is at this, you know, off the chart here on the right side, so in time, whereas Washburn is now kind of a sleepy little dead-end road, it's going to have all, you know, all the development from the avenue and the development from this project are now coming down. The avenue is making lots of improvements to Washburn, they're required to make a bunch of, do a bunch of things, and that facilitates this project as well. But this project will be adding some more, and as you recall, the traffic impact study said that the adverse impacts could be significantly mitigated through aggressive use of the shuttle bus system. Given that, you conditioned preliminary plan approval on, and the developer agreed to pay a proportional share of the shuttle bus operating and equipment replacement costs. We calculated, based on surveys done for this purpose by the Community Connector, that the projected share would be 13 percent. And so they will, one of the agreements is that they bear 13 percent of the cost. That agreement is in your packets. The developer's attorney has reviewed it. They made a few minor technical changes, nothing that affects the substance of the agreement, reviewed those yesterday. And I think that is, that is ready to go. Some of the elements of the agreement are that the share would be revisited every three years. The town would request the Community Connector to conduct an onboard, a boarding survey so that you can see whether that's going up or down. That payment would be made annually upfront at the beginning of the fiscal year, based on budget provided by the Community Connector, as they do to the town every year. That they could have, if they wish, representation on the advisory committee. Julie Kenny, who is a manager for Orchard Trails, and I believe will also be managing this development, also serves and has served from the beginning on the shuttle bus advisory committee, so she's very familiar with it. But the developer can have somebody on that advisory committee so that they are involved in the discussions of its operations. So that is in place. And then there were other elements of the traffic mitigation program, in particular, two items. One is that, the other thing that our peer review of the traffic studies suggested and recommended, this by Steve Sawyer of Sebago Technics, a well-respected traffic engineer here in Maine, he recommended that there be a right turn lane on Washburn Place, turning on to Park Street, because they estimated that about 17 percent, based on the modeling provided to them, 17 percent of the traffic coming out of these developments would be turning right. And if you took that 17 percent out of the queue of all the traffic, it would reduce delays at this intersection enough to warrant a right turn lane. In further discussion, as you recall, at the preliminary plan level where we had this discussion, there are many uncertainties here. We don't know how efficient the shuttle bus system may be. It may be more efficient than what we're projecting. We don't know the effect of the privately run shuttle system that the avenue is required to put in. We don't know what the effect on flow of traffic on Park Street will be once the roundabout is there. There are just too many uncertainties. So in discussion with the developer about this, we agreed that a payment in lieu of the right turn lane would make the most sense, and this was discussed with you at the preliminary plan stage, because those funds could be used to build the right turn lane, or they could be used for some other mitigation, toward a traffic signal if that turns out best, towards enhanced shuttle bus service if that turns out best, or towards some other little cross connection that we don't know about, if that turns out to be best. And the condition stated that the town engineer needed to review the cost estimate and endorse it, and she did that. Her estimate is $54,500 for that right turn lane, of that $4,000 is for an inspection cost, assuming the right turn lane is going to be built. So the agreement states that they'll make that $54,500 payment into an escrow account. If the lane's not built within five years after the projects, after this project is fully built and occupied, then the inspection fee part of that gets returned, but the rest of the money is either used for the right turn lane or for one of these other purposes. It can't be used for anything, it's got to be used for traffic mitigation activity. The attorney for the developer sent back slightly revised things, but I think she misinterpreted this one item about the $4,000 return, and she flipped it in her draft and said that only the $4,000 would be retained after five years and everything else would be returned. I talked with the, with Bob and Michael this afternoon and said, is this an intended or misinterpretation? Said it's a misinterpretation, so in any case, we'd be going with Tom Russell's draft that's got it correct. The other thing is the developer voluntarily offered to make an impact, what would be called an impact fee, to the town for Park Street corridor improvements, that they would have had to have made had this project come under DOT jurisdiction. It didn't quite make DOT jurisdiction, didn't trigger the number of trips that caused a review by the DOT. DOT, as you know, for the avenue and for Orchard Trails and for Grove and for Roma Joes and for all town, has always required an impact fee that's going towards the roundabout or other improvements. This developer volunteered to use the same formula and make an in lieu of payment for into an escrow account for traffic improvements. That comes to $13,000. That, both of these items are included in a so-called development agreement that's in your packet and prepared by Tom Russell.
Right, it did say on several occasions that as of this memo, we haven't received comments, have those?
Yes, we received, we received their attorney's comments. I've gone through them, they're very minor technical changes, very few. The only substantive one is this misinterpreted item that I've mentioned. So all is, all is in order with those. We will, I will recommend to you that a condition of approval, make sure that these include agreements that are finally endorsed by town attorney.
That's what I wanted.
Okay, conditions related to the sewer and stormwater and solid waste systems. One condition was that they pay the required impact fee for the sewer system. You will recall that downstream of this project, there is a length, about a 1,000-foot length of sewer line in Hillside Avenue that will be undersized to accommodate all the development, and this one kind of puts it over the top. Under our ordinance, they need to pay a proportional share of the upgrade of that sewer line, and so that will simply be a condition that will carry through to the final, to the final plan. There was also a note from Joe Matt, again, there's a couple of construction drawing items that should be included in the plan, a gasket and other thing, and that should become a condition of approval. The 10th condition from the preliminary plan was that the final plan satisfactorily addressed the comments of town engineer Mandy Oliver. In your packet is a point-by-point response by the applicant. They also provided watershed maps and other information to back up or to document, and revise stormwater plan to document the changes. And Mandy has reviewed those and found them satisfactory.
So we have, we didn't receive any email or anything that she has seen, their response to?
She should have gotten it, you should have gotten it yesterday.
I saw one comment where she provided, one review where she provided comments. I didn't see that.
Yeah, she had a one, she sent a one pager yesterday, which I think we've sent everybody.
I emailed everybody.
Yep.
I think it was two days ago.
Two days ago. Anyways, Mandy's indicated.
Essentially everything we did.
That's all I needed to know, yeah?
And she also spoke to the state, she also spoke to the state drainage review as well. Yes, part of her review was to talk to DEP, and she's satisfied that she's, the project is now satisfactory.
Must not have seen it then.
I've got it here, Phil, and I'll just, I just, I think it is important for you to see it, so, given your civil engineering acumen, why don't you just pass this on to Phil so you can take a quick scan of it? Importantly, the plan continues to meet the standard of post-development flows being no more than pre-development flows, and in particular, they've also responded to DEP modified and assured that they've got sufficient capacity to meet the water quality requirements of the site location.
Right, very good.
With respect to solid waste, there was a letter from Pine Tree Waste Services that they will be handling disposal at licensed facilities. Conditions related to litter control and onsite security, there are two things here. One is a one-page condition of approval that will be included on the face of the subdivision plan, and an agreement that incorporates those things as well with the town. And, you know, those things are as you discussed with them at the preliminary plan stage. Documentation of site location permit from the main DEP, as Mr. Clark indicated, we received an email from Michael and Bob that included a statement from DEP that they're in the process of preparing for signature from the commissioner, the approval of site And so those are all the conditions, so I think from our point of view, everything is satisfactory. There are a few other things that need to happen, that were submitted, and also things that need to happen or warrant mention. One is that part of the preliminary plan and as part of this plan, they've included the required post-construction stormwater maintenance agreement whereby, whereby they agree to inspect the stormwater management facilities at the required intervals and submit documentation to the town that those facilities either are working or they're being remediated if there's any issues with them. So that'll be a signed agreement per our ordinances. There is no subdivision improvement guarantee agreement required here because there is no public improvements involved with this development. There are facilities that feed into the public system, and those will be inspected by our town engineer during construction. There will be inspection fees related to that, and so part of the conditions of approval should include, as you'll see, that there be an inspection program and that they acknowledge that they will be paying those fees. To finalize the connection between Orion Way and Washburn, could you point where that connection was, Bob? Yeah, to finalize that connection, there's about a five-foot or six-foot length that is contained in a, in a long strip of land owned by, now owned by Park Seven, the developers of the avenue. That's a strip of land that in some places we might call a spite strip. Don't know why or when it was ever created, but it was there. And so as part of the avenue's review and approval, the planning board placed a condition on Park Seven, and Park Seven accepted that condition, that they would convey to the town a 50, at least a 50-foot wide strip to cross that spite strip, so the connection could be forged. And Tom Russell is speaking with Ed Behr, Park Seven's attorney, to get that executed. Yes, that doesn't need to be executed now, it just has to be executed before they start building it. But that is in order. I talked to Ed Behr today, and he said that there are no issues with it, they understand the requirement and in process. They will need to provide a recording plan for your signature. That recording plan needs to contain all the conditions of approval that run with the land, and so following whatever final action you take, I'll work with whoever's developing that recording plan on their, at their end to make sure that all those things are included. We will then probably be letting you know if you approve it tonight, that the plans, when the plan's available, so you can come into the office and sign it. There has been included both landscaping and a lighting plan, both in preliminary and with upgrade, greater information in this plan, and it appears to be all satisfactory to staff. The one thing that we didn't see was a sign, signage, and I'll ask Bob to address that.
Yeah, so we will submit a sign package once we know what the sign's going to look like as a separate document, but we're assuming that it would be on Washburn Place?
The key here is that, as a matter of right, they get one sign in a commercial two district that has to meet standards and be, you know, an application to code enforcement office. It's, you know, it's got to be within size, dimensions, and that sort of thing. If they wanted two, they would have to get your approval. And it's, there's nothing here, so you can't approve two, but.
That will be another condition.
Another condition will be that they, the sign meets all standards, that there be a single permanent sign if they wish. Your standard, any second would require your additional approval. And that's it.
Very good, thank you, Evan. All right, I'm going to open up a public hearing and invite any comments from the audience. I'll leave it open for a bit then. Additional comments from the board? I did have one, I can't help it, but I was reading through the stormwater pollution sheet on your, on your plan set, and I was just, I was impressed, but when I looked at the post-construction phase, I was just, I was looking for any mention of the post-construction stormwater maintenance agreement, because that wasn't in the packet that is apparently being developed or approved by the town.
Correct.
Yeah, I was just going through the list of things that you had there, and it was fairly aggressive, but my question, Evan, when I was looking at that, because it says inspection of all drainage features, and that during the first year of operation, that you're going to inspect after every storm and two to three days afterward. That's impressive. I mean, there's a lot of rain in this part of the world, but.
One of the things we're going to look into is contracting with CES, is a local engineering firm that's in this area that's worked in the past on this project before we were involved, so, so that we're not driving up from New Hampshire, we could, we could actually have those guys, they're, they're pretty close and local, and they could actually do those reporting for us, so.
That is fairly aggressive, is that your intent? And is that part of the, I'm just curious, is that part of the stormwater maintenance agreement?
It's part of the NPT's permit, that we're going to have to file a NPT's, the new federal stormwater guidelines, is every time after it rains, you have to do a report, so.
In the packet, it was kind of area of the traffic. Mine's an easy one, like Dan said, they do make. Mine's an easy one, but as I said, they do make requests to be tried.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Yep, very good.
And it's more or less to say that the silt fence or the hay bales or whatever, whatever erosion control we're using is intact and not, and functioning, so.
And then it really just kind of marrying the post-construction agreement, the maintenance agreement with the, the reporting in, that you're gonna provide all the necessary reports to the town.
All the reports to the town, yep.
Yeah, this was buried in our packet, so I didn't see that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one comment.
Yes?
Okay, I just have one basically friendly comment on your planting plan.
Yep.
And that is you include Thuya occidentalis, otherwise known as white cedar. And your site is in an area where there are lots and lots of deer.
Okay.
And that is a favorite winter deer food.
Okay.
And if you visit the UMaine campus, you will find many strangely pruned white cedars. So you may want to substitute something else.
Do you have something that you would prefer to see instead of the white cedars, or?
I don't have a suggestion.
We can, we can substitute something, we'll look at the list and find out what deer won't chew on, so. Yeah.
Very good. Other comments? Anything from the public? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Anything else? They've been quite thorough, I believe, in, in their responses. Alright, I think at this time, are we ready for the draft findings?
If you are, can you pass them out?
These, these are just proposed findings of fact from this evening. These are the proposed findings of fact for the Edge at Orchard Trails Orion UME Edge LLC, final subdivision and site plan review dated July 15th, 2015. Excuse me. Pursuant to Article Six, Section 18-177, site plan review. Article Seven, Section 18-210 subdivision review and Section 18-136 cluster development of the Orno Code of Ordinances. The Orno Planning Board has considered the application of Orion UME Edge LLC for final subdivision and site plan approval of a 61-unit cluster development consisting of two multifamily structures containing 12 dwelling units per structure for a total of 24 units, six single-family attached townhouse structures with six units per building for a total of 36 units, and a facilities building with one dwelling unit plus community and green open space. The dwelling units will contain a total of up to 224 bedrooms and are designed to be rented to students. Development site is located in a commercial two district off Park Street and Washburn Place. Based on all evidence presented by the applicant reviewing agencies, town departments and the public, planning board has found the following. Number one, character of the land, that the character of the land to be developed can be used safely for building purposes without danger to health or peril from fire, flood, or other menace. Any issues with, with that? Hearing none. Number two, conformity with other laws and regulations, that the proposed subdivision and site plan conform to other applicable laws and regulations, including but not limited to the standards for the commercial two district and the cluster development provisions of Article Five, Section 18-136, that a permit under the main site location of development act is pending and that the development does not come under the jurisdiction of the main Department of Transportation's traffic movement permit. Any issues with that? Hearing none. Number three, lots, that the standards for individual lots are not applicable to this review. Any concerns? Moving on, drainage improvements. Number four, that based on the materials submitted in the review and comments of the town engineer, the drainage facilities are large enough to accommodate potential runoff from the drainage area and to convey upstream flows generated by a 25-year frequency event without overloading the system or flooding areas not specifically designated to be flooded, and that the rate of flow of stormwater from the development will not exceed the rate of outflow of stormwater from the site prior to the development for two, 10, and 25-year events. That the effect of the subdivision's drainage on downstream drainage facilities will not overload the existing system. That the subdivision is planned to protect property from the hazard of flooding and that the stormwater management system is subject to the post-construction monitoring requirements of Chapter 13, Article Four of the Orno Code of Ordinances, and that the developer has accordingly made appropriate provisions for permanent ownership, maintenance, monitoring, and the inspections of stormwater facilities. Are there any issues with that? Hearing none. Number five, open space, wildlife habitat, and recreation land. A, that the development will preserve elements of natural beauty and aesthetics through the preservation of 3.15 acres of green open space, including wetlands and vernal pools contiguous to other preserved lands, plus 1.81 acres of community open space and buffer strips that meet or exceed the standard for cluster development. B, that the applicant, the applicant has provided an acceptable open space agreement and declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions to preserve the land designated as open space. C, that the development will not disturb any area that is designated by the comprehensive plan or state agencies as a unique natural area or as a site of historic or prehistoric importance. D, that no portion of the property lies within 250 feet of other significant wildlife habitat mapped by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. E, that all freshwater wetlands within the subdivision have been identified and mapped, and that the development avoids alteration of these wetlands. And F, that the development provides for vegetated buffers along its property boundaries meeting the dimensional requirements for a cluster development. Any concerns with that? Moving on, six, streets, traffic, pedestrians, and parking. A, that the development provides a private street through the development connecting two existing side streets, the private Orchard Trails Drive and the public Washburn Place, and that this street meets the construction standards of the subdivision and site plan ordinances. B, that appropriate measures have been taken to reduce or mitigate traffic impacts in the Park Street corridor, including participation in the public shuttle, bus service between downtown Orno and the University of Maine, and the payment and mitigation fees for other related traffic improvements. C, that the development provides for an adequate internal pedestrian circulation system and for connections to surrounding sidewalks and pathways, and that the design of the development's internal street meets the standards for a clustered residential development. D, that with mitigation measures provided, the development will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions on the roads. And E, that the adequate, that adequate off-street parking is provided in accordance with the land use ordinance. Any concerns or comments? Number seven, pollution control, that the development will not result in undue surface or groundwater or air pollution. That the development provides for erosion controls such that there will not be unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so as to create a dangerous or unhealthy condition. That there are no rivers, streams, or brooks within, within or abutting the property and that there will be no crossings of such. And through maintenance of open space and the development's erosion control and stormwater management and maintenance program, which is consistent with state and local stormwater management laws and regulations, the development will not have undue adverse impact on any river, stream, or brook, and that the development is not located within an aquifer recharge area and will not adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater. Any issues with that? Hearing none. Eight, utilities and solid waste management, that the development meets town and water district standards for sewerage and water supply, that the water district can supply sufficient water to the subdivision, that the development in part through payment of an impact fee to assist in the upgrade of a downstream sewer line in which the development depends will not cause an unreasonable burden on existing water supply and sanitary systems, sanitary sewer systems, that is. And that the development will be provided with electrical, telephone, telecommunications, and natural gas service adequate to meet anticipated use as a result of the development and that all utility lines will be placed underground. That the development has provided for a reasonable means to safely collect solid waste onsite for private disposal in a licensed facility, that it will not cause unreasonable burden on the town's ability to dispose of solid waste, and that the onsite storage of materials will adequately be buffered to minimize visual impacts. That the development provides an enforceable plan and mechanisms to control littering of abutting properties by residents of the development, which is a condition of approval of this subdivision and site plan. And lastly, that the development does not involve the handling, storage, or use of any hazardous, special, or radioactive materials. Any concerns or comments for that one? Number nine, building signs and lighting, that the buildings are a mix of single-family attached and multifamily structures that meet the standards for cluster development, that the structures are organized in clusters in order to preserve open space and natural resources in a manner that meets the standards for clustered residential development, that the townhouses are appropriately designed and located in accord with the standards for clustered housing, and that the roof designs and the exterior siding are in accordance with Article Five, Section 18-128, design guidelines for the commercial two district, and that the project's permanent sign must conform to the standards for signs in the C-two district. And lastly, that the development provides for adequate lighting along its proposed internal street and parking areas, and that the site's area lighting will be designed and shielded to prevent glare and to meet standards of the land use ordinance. Any concerns or comments there? Hearing none. Security and noise control. Number 10, that the developer will provide onsite security at such times and through such means that are satisfactory to the town police chief according to a plan submitted as part of the subdivision and site plan application. That the development's lease agreements will include as a condition of approval of this subdivision and site plan measures designed to reduce disruptive, dangerous, or criminal behaviors, and that the development, its owner, and its tenants will be subject to the town's disorderly property ordinance. And lastly, that the development has the ability to conform to the noise standards contained in Chapter 13 of the town's Code of Ordinances. Any issues with that? Hearing comments? Hearing none. This is the last one. Number 11, financial and technical capacity, that the applicant has demonstrated the technical and financial capacity to complete the subdivision according to all local, state, and federal standards. Is that evidenced by a letter dated March 18th, 2015 from First Virginia Community FVC Bank concerning its financing history with the developer? That because the developer will not be constructing, public improvements is part of the project, no subdivision improvement guarantee is required, and that the town, at the developer's cost, will be, will inspect elements of the development affecting public safety, stormwater management, and erosion control, and onsite utilities that connect to public systems. Any comments or concerns on that one? Hearing none. I think we're ready at this time for a motion.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
After receiving final, you know, information and, and talking to staff, there are just a couple of modifications to the staff recommendation.
Yes.
That I can tell you what they are. And of course, you may have your own change to these, these are just recommendations. You may have things to add or change. So on pages seven and eight now of my report to you on your staff recommendation, in item one, that says that the following easements and agreements approved as part of the final subdivision site plan be fully executed prior to issuance of any building permit, I would recommend inserting after agreements, the phrase "as reviewed and endorsed by the town attorney and approved" as part of the final subdivision plan.
So that first sentence.
Say that one more time now. That the following easements and agreements "as reviewed and endorsed by the town attorney and approved," and so forth. On, in item three, at the bottom of page seven, I'm sorry, item four, top of page After the semicolon, add the following. And that construction drawings. I'm giving them time to write it down because they've got it recited.
These were Joe's comments.
Yes. And that construction drawings include the items contained in Superintendent Joe Madigan's email of June 18, 2015.
Alright, one more time.
And that construction drawings include the items contained in Superintendent Joe Madigan's email of June 18, 2015. Okay? In item six, at the end of that, after the semicolon, another long phrase, and, so this is the, this is an important item, and I think it's important for the developer to understand as well, this is a recommendation through the code enforcement office. This is the item that talks about inspections program and having a sufficient sum in the escrow account at all times to pay for that. The code enforcement office and town managers have started with the last couple of projects using, requiring, and you required as part of the avenue, required that, as the code enforcement office or so directs, that they hire a certified third-party inspector for building inspection components of the project. Our, Mandy Oliver's will be inspecting all the site work. But these large projects overwhelm a single person, you know, a single code enforcement officer who's gotta be doing all the other things that have to happen in a town this size. So, the, for that last phrase would say, after the semicolon, "and which may include hired and paid by the developer as may be required by the code enforcement office. And finally, that condition, we recommend that condition relating to the sign that should be added, that would say that a single permanent project sign, if one is erected, meet all standards for residential signs in the C-dash-two district. I emphasize that this is recommendation, you're absolutely.
Correct. That's all I had, Joe Madigan's comments, the sign meets the standards, and I didn't have that Tom Russell comment, but his others make sense. Any comments on those conditions? I believe we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the final clustered major subdivision, major plan, site plan review requested by Orion E., excuse me, UME Edge LLC, that are proposing a 61-unit student housing facility at 111 Park Street, Tax Map 20-1, Lot 42, in the C-two zone, with the following conditions. That the following easements, one, that the following easements and agreements "as reviewed and endorsed by the town attorney, approved as part of the final subdivision and site plan, be fully executed prior to issuance of any building permit." Item A, I'm gonna go A through whatever here. Grant of, grant of right-of-way easement from Orion UME Edge LLC to the town of Orno to provide ingress and egress for public transportation and emergency vehicles on Orion Way. B, reciprocal easement agreement between Orion UME Edge LLC and Orion UME LLC to enable connection to Orion Way to. connection to Orion Way to Orchard Trails Drive and to provide residence of the two properties, the Edge at Orchard Trails and Orchard Trail Apartments, reciprocal rights to access to Orion Way and Orchard Trails Drive. C, traffic mitigation agreement between Orion UME Edge LLC and the town of Orno, the final form of which is to be approved by the town attorney for proportional financial support of the town/university shuttle bus service. D, development agreement between Orion UME Edge LLC and the town of Orno, the final form of which is to be approved by the town attorney for specified traffic mitigation fees. E, declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions and related open space agreement between Orion UME Edge LLC and the town of Orno, related to protection, use, and maintenance of the open spaces required by the cluster development standards of the land use ordinance. F, maintenance agreement for stormwater management facilities as required by Chapter 13, Article Four of the town's Code of Ordinances. G, maintenance and security agreement relating to control of litter, providing a safe environmental environment for residents of the development, an agreed-to condition of approval, summarizes elements of this agreement. On to item two, that the applicant provide the town with documentation of approval of all required permits from the Maine Department of Environmental Protection prior to issuance of any building permit for the project. Item three, that all sediment and erosion control measures approved as part of the subdivision and site plan be in place in a timely manner so as to prevent the export of sediment to water bodies, wetlands, or off-site. Four, that the sewer impacting connection fees be paid as calculated by the superintendent of the town wastewater pollution control facility before the issuance of any building permit for the project, and that construction drawings include the items contained in Superintendent Joe Madigan's email dated 6/15/2015, and that shop drawings for the development's pump station, which is to be privately owned and maintained, be reviewed and approved by the town engineer before installation.
Quick comment, was that 6/15 or 6/18?
6/18.
6/18, 2015. Should I reread item number four?
Good, 6/18.
Okay. Number five, that the applicant and the applicant's general contractor and other appropriate personnel meet with the town engineer, code enforcement officer, public works director, superintendent of wastewater pollution control facility, superintendent of Orno VZ Water District, and town fire marshal prior to work, prior to start of work, to review all requirements for stormwater and erosion control, protection of wetlands and other open space, utility connections, fire safety, buildings, and other matters relating to codes and this development's approval by the planning board. Item six, that the applicant and consultation with the town engineer and code enforcement officer agree to an inspections program by the town or its agent, with any related fee paid into an escrow account in sufficient sum as to maintain a balance established by the town manager throughout construction until a final sign-off by the town, and which may include a certified third-party inspector hired and paid by the developer as may be required by the code enforcement office. Item number seven, that the signed subdivision plan to include conditions of approval that run with the property be recorded within 90 days of the approval of the plan. Eight, that the applicant and the applicant's contractors comply with all the applicable local, state, and federal laws, ordinances, and rules during and after construction. Nine, a single permanent project sign, when erected, meet all standards for residential signs in the C-two district.
I believe we had an attachment to number eight, did we? Didn't eight go on to, no, it was seven that had the attachment.
Yep, seven had the run-on.
Yeah, okay, yep, I'm good.
Yep, I think I covered it, so we do have a motion.
Second.
Very good, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Congratulations, moving on. Old business, there is none. New business, there is none. Discussion? Everybody wanna chat? No? Last item, adjournment.
I just mentioned that you do have a full board now, the council's appointed a second associate, Jason Charlin, of Essex Street, and he'll be able to join you at your next meeting.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Very good. All those in favor?
Thank you for all your time.